Good evening, welcome to the Southbridge School Committee meeting. Today is Tuesday, February 3rd, 2015. Please join the school committee in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm just gonna switch the next two agenda items and call the meeting to order at 7:01 PM. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Abrahamsen.
Present.
Mrs. Congdon.
Present.
Mrs. Donovan.
Present.
Mrs. McLaughlin.
Present.
Mr. Olivo.
Present.
Dr. Page.
Present.
Mrs. Quinney.
Present.
Seven present.
Thank you. The next agenda item is public input. Is there anybody from the public who would like to address the school committee this Seeing none, we'll move on to the next agenda item, which is approval of the consent agenda. The following items are on this evening's consent agenda. We have meeting minutes from our regular school committee meeting on January 13th, from our emergency meeting January 7th. We have policy first readings, Policy BEE, Special Procedure for Hearings, Policy BGD, School Committee Review of Procedures, Policy BK, School Committee Memberships. We have second reading of Policy BEDH, Public Communication with the School Committee. This was formerly Public Participation at School Committee Meetings. Also on the consent agenda is the third reading and adoption of Policy GCCD, Domestic Violence Leave Policy, and the revocation of Policies BGB, Policy Adoption, BGC, Policy Revision and Review, Policy BHD, Board Communications with the Public. Each of those policies is considered no longer necessary by virtue of other policies that have been adopted. We also have on the consent agenda the appointment of Cheryl Stanton to serve as designee to the Southern Worcester County Educational Collaborative Board and the composition of our Budget and Finance Subcommittee. Does any member wish to remove any item from the consent agenda? Seeing none. If there are no objections, agenda items for A, 1 and 2, for B, 1, 2 and 3, for C, 1, for D, 1, for E, 1, 2 and 3, for F and for G are adopted. Are there any, last time, any objections? Thank you. Those items are adopted. Under School Committee Chairman announcements, I just have a quick one. Tonight, we're very pleased, the school committee is very pleased to be joined by representatives of the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We will have two presentations, the first being the Quarterly Progress Report on the District's AIP, the Accelerated Improvement Plan. This is something that happens regularly. The second is a special presentation on school and district accountability. Mrs. Donovan and I, on behalf of the school committee, requested this presentation to provide the community with information on how school and district accountability is determined. We have invited our town councilors to this meeting specifically for the second presentation and are happy to see them here this evening. As Associate Commissioner Johnson sets up his presentation, I would ask town councilors to join the school committee on the dais, and at that time, I will request a motion to suspend the rules to allow the town councilors to ask questions they may have. Following that presentation, I will recess the meeting for 10 minutes to allow councilors to leave the dais, and our school committee will resume in order, our school committee meeting will resume in order. Is that a plan?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, at this time, for our first presentation, on the Accelerated Improvement Plan, our quarterly progress report, we have with us Ms. Laura Rochaine, Ms. Pat Williams. Is Pat here?
Yes.
And Mr. Rob Curtin, if you'd like to. Maybe just again for the community's benefit, just introduce yourself and what your role at the Department of Education is. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you for having us. My name is Rob Curtin. I'm the Director of the Center for District and School Accountability, along with being the Director of the Education Data Services Unit at the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We're here tonight to present to you the, an overview of the quarterly progress report under the Accelerated Improvement Plan, covering the quarter from October through December. And I hope you've all received copies of that, of that quarterly progress report, and we're gonna provide an overview for you tonight. Pat Williams was supposed to be here, is supposed to be here to be, to provide you some more detail. We don't wanna hold up the proceedings, so I'm gonna turn it over to Laura Rochaine from my staff, and she will cover the explanation for you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you very much for the opportunity to be here. So, just wanted to step back for a moment. When Pat Williams and I were here back in October, we talked a little bit about what the department refers to as the cycle of continuous improvement, and how the Accelerated Improvement Plan process is designed to really be based on those four elements of that cycle. So, planning, very clear, specific objectives and strategies to meet those, executing those strategies, monitoring the implementation to determine what's working and what's not, and then modifying as needed, and that that cycle continues on. But that's really the basis of the Accelerated Improvement Plan process. So, at that time, when we were here in October, the district had done a great deal of work in terms of planning and setting the stage for implementation. And so, the report that I'll be discussing this evening, as Rob Curtin said, covers the period of October through December. And as you'll hear, there was a great deal of work that was implemented during that period. There were some positive results. So, the execution, the implementation part of that cycle is definitely in place. And the next step for the district is really to begin to identify more specific evidence that illustrates progress towards some specific AIP benchmarks, and I'll talk a little bit more about what those benchmarks are. So, I will just share a few, very brief highlights from the report, and then Rob and I are happy to answer any questions that you might have. So, the first strategic objective in the AIP is to develop, refine, and implement curricula for all K to 12 subjects and instructional practices aligned to the Common Core and WIDA standards. So, in the last report, as you know, there were, there was much evidence that curriculum had been developed as planned, and the expectation for this quarter, October through December, was that there would be evidence that the new curriculum was being implemented. And there was some evidence to that, to that point, and we'll be looking for additional evidence going forward in the future quarter. The second strategic objective is to expand and embed the use of data, K to 12, to foster a cycle of continuous improvement aimed at assessing and improving instructional practices throughout the district. So, this year, for the first time, the high school is administering quarterly assessments in English Language Arts and Math. The results from the math assessments were available for this period. There was great variability in the results of those assessments, and the district's looking very closely at the reasons for that. There was encouraging data this quarter related to suspension rates. Suspension rates decreased quite a bit at both the middle and the high school levels. There was improvement in attendance rates at the middle school, and there was an improvement in the number of dropouts at the high school this quarter compared, compared to the same quarter last year. One area of concern, and again, this is something that we know that district leaders are looking at closely, is the rates of course failures in grades 6, 7, 8, 9, 11, and 12. There appeared to be a decrease in failure rates, in other words, improvement, in grade 10, excuse me, but in other grades 6 through 12, pardon me, there were a great deal of course failures. And so, I think the reasons for that are being investigated now. Another area of significant progress this quarter was the development and the implementation of a plan to meet the needs of English language learners. That's something that was mentioned in the previous report. This period that we're reporting on now saw a lot of progress in that area, very careful attention to identifying and meeting the needs of English language learners. So, our recommendations in this, under this strategic objective are basically to continue using the strategies that have been in place so far, and also to very carefully analyze data related to course failures. Strategic Objective 3 is to improve educator quality and the ability to implement rigorous and engaging instruction. So, the monitor observed a day of coaching by Focus on Results and found that to be very high quality. The Focus on Results representative worked with a school principal, did co-observations with that person, and discussed areas of feedback that would be helpful in order to help teachers improve their practice. And so, the next step under this objective is to continue that coaching and to provide even more renewed attention to having district leaders doing a lot of that work as well, being in schools, very frequently co-observing with principals, being in classrooms, providing feedback to teachers. And Strategic Objective 4 is an area that we will pursue more going forward. There was some work that was done that the monitor learned about, but just in terms of the timing, we didn't receive, in talking with Superintendent Stanton, there were some events that were very well attended that we just didn't have a chance to learn about. So, we'll be reporting about those in the next report. So, overall, there was a very good faith effort to implement much of the Accelerated Improvement Plan, and the next step is to be sure that all of that work is measurable. Happy to take any questions that you might have.
Anybody have questions? We always have questions, they're just thinking. Mrs. Donovan?
Yeah.
Do you wanna leave?
Okay.
There you go. Mrs. Donovan.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair, through you to Ms. Rochaine. Thank you. Thank you both for coming this evening. My first question is very simple. Under Objective Number 1, we talk about CPT agendas and CPT meetings, and I'm sorry, I didn't know what that was an abbreviation or an acronym for.
CPT is Common Planning Time.
Common Planning Time. Okay.
Sorry, we should've spelled that out.
No, that's okay. One thing I also had read that under Objective 1, one thing that our principals and teachers have chosen as an instructional focus that's appropriate for each school, and I was wondering, is that what the reading comprehension is for West Street School and vocabulary, whatever, for other schools? And just, just because I was curious, why was each school given its own separate instructional focus rather than, versus a district-wide instructional focus? I don't know if you could answer that.
So, my understanding is that that is based on data from the school in terms of what students need, but I would defer to Superintendent Stanton about the details of that.
That is correct. Instructional focus or FOKI are developed based on the instructional leadership team's analysis of school-based data.
Okay.
So, it would vary depending on the needs of the specific students and the demographics of the school, and ILTs develop those instructional FOKI and then build their improvement plans around that.
Okay. That makes sense. Thank you very much. The next question that I had, we talked about our English language learners and our students with disabilities, and obviously, we're addressing those issues, and it's something that had not received a lot of focus in the past, and I know that we have parts of, or members of our district leadership team who were very engaged, Ms. Coligan being one of them, to come up with some action plans specifically addressed for those two subgroups. I did read one piece that it said that, let's see, relative to our ANET assessment. So, looking under Strategic Objective Number 2, Paragraph 2, just based on the report that was given to us, the district provided evidence that it met benchmark requirements in the aggregate data, but it was not provided for students in the ELL or students with disability subgroup. And I wasn't sure why that data wasn't provided at the time. Is it because we're initiating that action plan if that was the reason for that?
Yep. I actually don't have the answer to that. Superintendent Stanton, do you?
We have not worked to disaggregate that data at this point. That would be the next step for us.
Okay.
Yeah. And we certainly recognize that this was a period of transition.
Absolutely. Yes, thank you. Another thing that I wanted clarification on, for me, it's our top of page 3, you did touch upon it, Mr. Shane, relative to the number of courses that were failed at the high school during this quarter. This is extremely concerning to all of us, and I don't know the reasons behind it, but this absolutely is something that we need to address, and it is stated that, you know, we are, we're looking into it, but I have to say right off the bat, that was extremely, extremely concerning. And just for clarification, it was the increase in the number of courses failed, and I wasn't sure, is it the number of students failing a course or the overall aggregate of the number of courses that were offered and who, or, I guess I don't understand when you say "courses failed," what do you mean by that terminology?
Right. So, my understanding is that that's the number of courses failed.
Courses failed. So, it could be multiple students, it could be the same student failing multiple courses. It's an aggregate number of the, of the number of courses that were failed. I mean, in that, in that, the percentage of, of all the courses that were taken, the percentage of failures increased in the number of courses, not the number of students.
Okay. And I don't know, through you to Ms. Stanton, and this is a period where you are not the superintendent, and I am fully aware of that, but how is that, are we actively seeking where those, so trying to rectify that situation and really come up with what is causing that?
Sure. I think that our plan manager, Pat Jackman, is working very hard with the high school principal, Melissa Earls, and that ILT to discover what the reasons are around that increase in student failure and to provide a strategic plan to address that need.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Rochaine, you mentioned that there was a one-day visit, you know, that somebody came in and met with the principals. I just wanna make it clear that this report isn't based on a one-day snapshot.
It's not correct. So, when I said a one-day visit, I was actually referring to one of the times that Pat Williams, the monitor, was in the district. She actually spent the day with someone from Focus on Results, who I understand is also in the district quite frequently.
And then, we have people that are embedded in our school district, you know, from parts of Desi, who are our plan managers that, you know, I know aid in this. So, are they able to provide feedback to you or to Ms. Williams on their day-to-day interactions with our, with our staff and we are, with our DLT teams to get a general, better idea of where we are relative to following this AIP plan? Is their input provided in this document?
So, actually, the way that we have established the AIP process is we really view the superintendent as leading this with, of course, the school committee's guidance, and so, we really encourage superintendents to be in what we call highlight meetings, which are monthly check-ins that the monitor comes to and collects evidence and learns about the work of the district. So, while I'm sure there are occasional conversations between plan managers and plan monitors, we really see the district leaders as being sort of overseeing this process.
Okay. That was another question that I had, so we clarified that, I won't have to worry about And I guess my, my very last question pertains to the note that was given at the end of our report.
Yeah.
Given the recent change in leadership in the district, we will provide baseline process and performance ratings for each strategic initiative, beginning with the next quarterly report. I wasn't sure what you meant by baseline process and performance ratings.
Yep. So, we've found that these ratings, as, and I think I mentioned, last time I was here, we rate each initiative twice, one in terms of the quality of implementation and one in terms of progress toward goals.
Yes.
We've found that those ratings really are the most helpful to use to show progress over time. And so, basically, we recognize that there had been a change in leadership in the district, and so, we thought that really the most accurate way to provide these ratings would be to begin with the next quarter after Superintendent Stanton has been in place.
Okay. That's fine. Thank you. All right, I'm all set. Thank you both very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, anybody. Dr. Page?
Yeah, question. Thank you, Madam Chair. So, in terms of the, you know, the, when you say grade 9, 10% increases in courses failed, grade 10, 20% decrease courses failed, what's, what's being done in terms of determining what courses, what percentage of students? I mean, I guess I just don't understand this data in terms of how it's being presented.
Yep. So, this is actually the way it was presented to us from district leaders, and so, I actually, again, would defer to Superintendent Stanton.
It's, it's part of one of the benchmarks that we have to measure.
Okay.
I think that if you worked through the Guidance Department, you would hear conversations going on with grade-level teams and also individual students regarding course failure and progress toward graduation requirements, and I do know that under Principal Earls, that has been a key focus to increase the rigor of course load for students so that they are meeting state requirements for graduation. So, the rigor has certainly risen, and now, we need to identify the reasons why we have an increase in students who are failing because they are taking courses that will, you know, get them towards graduation.
Okay. So, I guess a follow-up to that would be then, you know, is there a breakout here in terms of, you know, how many social studies, how many math, how many, you know, science, whatever, in terms, in terms of trying to pinpoint where the real problems are? Because I'm just, I'm asking the question, I'm assuming that's happening, and I'd like to verify.
Sure. That happens with Julie Fields, our data director. It has, it starts as a conversation with Julie and the principal, and then goes to the instructional leadership team and through the Guidance Department.
And we can also certainly ask Pat Williams to follow up with you on that to learn more.
And, and, and I guess just a kind of clarification, so, when you say "courses failed," I'm assuming that would be the nine weeks in this period from the, the second nine-week period of the year?
I would.
Or is it, is it from the first nine-week period?
I would believe it'd be the first quarter.
The first quarter. Okay. Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody down here on this side? Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Hello, thank you all for coming. The first question I had kind of piggybacks off what Ms. Donovan and Mr. Page were talking about regarding that failure rate at the high school level. My first question is, maybe this is for Ms. Stanton, is that cohorts, like the increase, is that versus, so 12th grade is at 76% increase? Is that for the cohort, or is that just 12th grade?
12th grade, 12th grade from this year to 12th grade from last year.
From 12th grade last year. Thank you. And I think for me, it's even more concerning that it's that high of an increase versus last year, given, I'm quite certain that there was not a 0% failure, courses failed last year, so that number, again, is very concerning. But it's being looked into and hopefully will be addressed. Another question that I had and concerned was, and again, I don't know if this is for you or for Ms. Stanton, the high school quarterly assessments, that they've established a quarterly assessment for math, so that would, my assumption, and if I'm wrong, please, so, they, the high school set that up, they established, these are what our goals are, what we'd like to see students have knowledge of by the end of the quarter, based on the curriculum or whatever they're teaching. So, I guess that, that number then becomes even more concerning to me, that based on the standards that were set by the high school teachers in math, that they would have the objective of 75% of students will get a 70 or better on this information that I and we are gonna present, and that wasn't met, is, I think, more concerning than the course rate failure, 'cause if courses rigor have increased, I think that kind of makes sense. If rigor has gone up, then there would be more people who are struggling along, but I think if out the gate, a team has established, this is what we plan to teach, this is where we should be, and then that's not being met, I think, as concerning as the other numbers are, I think that is especially concerning to me, and I think we need to focus on that as well. Regarding the ANET and the comparison to other districts similar to ours, which, I'm sorry, I meant Strategic Objective Number 2, it breaks it down into grade level, comparing grade levels regarding proficiency on ANET. Now, for that, it's district-wide. Do we have our number, I know 6th grade was in a special, especially challenging subset. Are we doing better in other grades? Is there a comparison grade to grade versus district-wide, how we're kind of falling?
So, my understanding is that grade 6 was the most concerning. However, in general, this really is the baseline assessment. So, I think the most useful way to look at that data would be, once there's another, the next administration of that assessment, to see how the district compares to the comparison group over time, whether there was improvement.
Okay.
And I, I think certainly from the, the questions we're hearing from you, we will be sure in our next quarterly report to you to do a little bit of a deeper dive, make sure there's a deeper dive in the data for you, as we can bring to you, to make sure that the, the data, not only are presented in sort of the bulleted format they are in terms of the quarterly progress report, but to make sure that it has some of the detail behind it to answer some of these questions.
And I guess my question on that was, is this compared, given that ANET compares us always to the group of ANET schools?
Yep.
Forever. Versus last year, where are we this year? I think that information, did we fall below? Are we staying the same? Has that fallen off? Have we improved? I think that information would be good to be able to gauge, given we have, you know, failure rates for a set year. Does that make sense?
Yep.
All right, I've got a lot. And regarding WIDA for our ELL students, my understanding is WIDA assesses the ability to write, read, and understand and speak English in, at a certain level of proficiency, and that's how students are then classified. When we have students that are, because developmentally, their age, are unable to read, write, is there another tool that we're using to assess those students at those lower-grade levels? Preschool, kindergarten, first grade, where they're just learning to read and write? Preschool, kindergarten, first grade, where they're just learning to read and write? Are we...
Right. I don't know the answer, not as far as a state assessment, no. But I don't know what's happening as far as a local assessment in that area.
Okay. All right. I just didn't know if there was a state tool that kind of took into consideration those factors, as opposed to students who may, they're just not reading, so they're never going to pass a English reading if they aren't able to read at all. The other question, I think, that, oh, the suspension rate, is that, do you know if that's long-term suspensions or short-term suspensions?
I think it's suspensions in general.
In general? So one-day in-school suspension, that's all included into that?
That's right. So that's my understanding, right, that it's any suspensions, and that number, that number of suspensions in the middle school, for example, has decreased. So the number of suspensions at all has decreased by 50% or whatever the number was in the report.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, and thank you to our Pat and Sally, who I know have put in a lot of work and are invested in moving the district forward. And we appreciate all of your effort and input, because I think without this data, without this information, we don't know those next steps to move our district forward. So I thank you all for your hard work and your commitment to the students of Southbridge. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think, Dr. Page, did you have another question? Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, Mrs. Condon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For you. One question I had was, just if you could explain to the public what the state's retail course is? And that's under strategic objective number two.
Right. So, I mean, in general, what is retail? Is that what you're asking?
Yes. Yep.
So retail is the initiative to prepare our educators to be able to teach English-language learners.
And do you know how we stand as a district in regards to our teachers, in regards to taking the reteach?
In terms of the implementation and where you are in terms of teachers taking courses?
And how many have that SEI endorsement?
I do not. But that's something that we could get that information for you.
Just a follow-up question to that as well is, right now for funding, it's my understanding, and I could be wrong, does the state fund that program right now?
State funds retail, yes.
How about, does it end this year?
Does the state funding for retail end this year? I don't believe so, no.
One more year?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. And my other question was, under strategic objective number three, on the next page, because Southbridge requested extensions for more than half of the required district-determined measures as part of the educator evaluation system, the district was required to submit a DDM progress update to the DESE by December 19th. That update has not been submitted. Maybe Superintendent Stanton might be able to answer that. I'm not sure.
Sure. The extension request does require that submission. We are currently working with the union on some of the negotiable parts of that, and once that is complete, we will submit the extension report.
Perfect. Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Anybody else? Last call. Dr. Page?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Real quick, this is probably more for Superintendent. Under strategic objective four, which is increasing parental and community involvement to enhance student learning, basically it says here that, you know, the monitor will seek to learn more in the next reporting period about progress in the area of increasing family engagement and communication. Can you elaborate? What are you planning on, what are we doing in that area to try and meet the target objectives? And are there metrics associated with it?
Sure. That's actually the conversation at the DLT right now. The conversation regarding how are we reaching out to community members? In what ways have we reached out that we didn't collect data effectively to report to the plan monitor? Because we had several opportunities at standing events to include pieces of our instructional work at those events where we have a captive audience at, say, the music event or the art show. So doing a better job of collecting that data at those events as our initiatives to increase community involvement in schools.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for having us.
There may be a couple of additional questions at some point, if somebody thinks of it. So thank you for that. At this time, Senior Associate Commissioners Russell Johnson and Brooke Clenchey are here, and they will be presenting information on school and district accountability. I would ask that if their town counselors would like to come join us up at the dais, we have empty seats. That way you have a microphone if you'd like to ask any questions, and you'll be able to view the presentation. I would also ask, I would request a motion to suspend the rules to allow the town counselors to ask questions during this presentation.
Oh, who?
Thank you. Mr. Olivo makes the motion. You're going to second it?
Second.
Second it? Okay. Mr. Abrahamson seconds the motion to suspend the rules. This is a three, two-thirds vote that we need in order to suspend the rules. So I would ask for a roll call, please.
Mrs. Condon?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Olivo?
Yes.
Dr. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Abrahamson?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you very much. I just, for the record, would like to note, the town counselors that have joined us at the dais, we have Chairman Moriarty, we have Councilor Steves, Councilor Manna, we have Councilor Vecchia, Councilor Clements, and Councilor Estrada. Thank you all for joining us this evening. And I present to you Senior Associate Commissioner Russell Johnston.
Thank you. Thank you, Chairwoman McLaughlin, and members of both the town council and the school committee. Great to be here with you tonight. I am a former superintendent. I was the superintendent of West Springfield, so not too much further up the pike. And the joke that I had with my school committee was that if they gave me the mic, they knew that we're going to get it back for a while. So I will try to be brief tonight, but I'm not known for my brevity. My job tonight is to try to educate you on our accountability system. But I want to make one more connection to my previous life. I had the pleasure of getting to know your interim business manager, Aaron Osborne. He was an intern in my office when he was getting his certification as a school business manager. A true pleasure and a great opportunity to reconnect with him here tonight. So I can tell you that you are in good hands financially. That's a great way to start. So my job tonight is to tell you a little bit more about how the accountability system works here in Massachusetts, and then applying it to your data here in Southbridge. And so I'm going to give you a fairly detailed review of the accountability system. I'm going to try to use my background as a teacher to make this interesting for you. And I am glad to answer questions along the way. I'm also joined tonight by Senior Associate Commissioner Brooke Clenchey. And the two of us at the end will also be glad to answer any questions that you have, along with my colleagues who just finished their presentation as well. So just to start out, I want to give you a reminder of where the district stands right now. In 2004, the Board of Education, as it was known at the time, declared the district as underperforming, given the guidelines that we had at that time. Then in 2010, when we switched accountability systems, as happened throughout the Commonwealth at that point, the district was named a Level Four district, despite the fact that you don't have a Level Four school, as I know you all know, that your schools are, that your lowest schools are at Level Three, but you are a Level Four district based on the continuing, the issues that had been raised in 2004 that still were deemed as not being fully addressed in 2010. So now let me give you a little bit more information about this current accountability system, because this is what you all are dealing with, what you are working with, in order to make the gains that you need to make to, as I know you all want, to exit Level Four. So just to begin with, the goal of our accountability system is to reduce proficiency gaps by half by 2017. I don't know if those of you remember when No Child Left Behind was brought into law? The goal was for all students, all students, to be proficient by 2014. And I remember working in districts at that time and thinking, well, that's going to be very, very difficult. And the change to this goal of taking our proficiency gap and reducing it by half seemed a lot more encouraging. And it's based on every school's baseline. So where do they start and what are they trying to get to is customized by school in the Commonwealth. So it gives schools a little bit more direction and purpose from within their own set of priorities that they're working on. As you know, there are five accountability levels that are also tied to the assistance that the department provides. The way that we measure the progress towards cutting that proficiency gap in half is an index called the Progress and Performance Index, PPI, and it measures performance and growth in English Language Arts, Math, Science, and some high school indicators that I'll explain a little bit more in a minute. We also look at school percentiles. This is key for determining which districts are in level, which schools, I'm sorry, are in Level Three. And so school percentile is important, and I'm going to talk to you about your school percentiles as we go along. And then finally, what is important to us is that you can't achieve Level One status in particular unless you show that you are making progress for both all students in the aggregate and your high-need students. And for high-need students, we define those as students who are English-language learners, students with disabilities, and low-income students. And any student who falls into any one of those categories, or any student who falls into more than one category, counts as a high-need student. So that's an important, all those things matter as I talk about your accountability data. Percentage, the percentile rank, the high-need subgroup, and the aggregate, I'm going to get into that more, but just lock that into your working memory as we go forward here tonight. So again, just a quick graphic to show you that in 2011, we set our baseline for what we expected, where schools started this accountability system, and what they needed to do to reduce the gap in half by 2017. And what we did is we broke out yearly progress measures. So we calculated, we divided each year out and showed, and we know what progress schools have to make in order to be on target by reducing that gap in half by 2017. So some key points about this index that we use to measure the progress that schools are making towards reducing that proficiency gap. First, we tried to make this very simple, and I always explain, I want this to be so that when I talk to my mom in Colorado, probably tonight as I'm driving home from this meeting, I can tell her about this accountability system, and it can make sense to her. Zero points means you declined. 25 points means you didn't improve. 50 points means that you made some progress, but you didn't hit your target. 75 and greater, you're on target, up to 100. So it's a pretty simple system. You can remember those numbers. And I think it's pretty easy to explain that that's how the 100-point scale works. There are these core indicators, as I have noted here around, that they are English Language Arts, Math, and Science in the composite CPI, the Composite Performance Index. The growth index is very important, and in a community like Southbridge, where you need to see growth, right? You know you're behind, and you're trying to catch up. So it's important that we don't just measure you based on your performance, but also on the growth your students are showing, so that they're set up to show greater performance year in and year out as time goes on. So we give you credit for growth in your students. Your annual dropout rate and your graduation rate also count into this system, both the four-year rate and the five-year rate. And then there's also extra credit points that can be given, such that you can actually earn more than 100 points because of the extra credit that is allowed. So what's also important to know about this is the accountability system is based on four years' worth of data. Any time we give you a number that is between 0 and 100, there is, that's a four-year formula that gives the greatest weight to the past MCAS administration year. So in your case, the 2014 year is given the most weight, but you also carry with you the weight of all of the previous three years to the last administration date of the statewide test. So it's four years' worth of data. And why that's important is that we believe that you have to show this over time. You can't have a fluke. You can't have one good year. You need, districts need to show, and I needed to show when I was superintendent, doing very similar work what you're doing, is that we could do this year in and year out, and that we could maintain this progress and close these gaps over time. And then keep in mind that all districts are classified based on their lowest-performing school, with the exception of when there is a decision of the board, which is the case in Southbridge, that you are a Level Four district because of a decision of the board, not because of having a Level Four school. So that was my quick overview. I hope you stayed with me. Saw a lot of nodding heads, though. So briefly, there are sort of some groupings of schools. We have, I'm just going to start at the top. The highest level of school achievement is a commendation school. Then in Level One, those are the schools that are meeting their gap-narrowing goals in both the aggregate and, the word "and" is important, and their high-need students. The Level Two schools are not meeting their proficiency gap goals for either the aggregate, in either the aggregate or the high-needs group, but they're more on target. This is where we have, and this is a bit of a, you know, some mathematical terms, Level One and Two are criterion-referenced. So are you meeting your gap-closing goals is a criterion-referenced rating of those schools. And then Level Three is where we use norm referencing. So the schools that are in the lowest 20% of all schools in the Commonwealth are those that are labeled at Level Three. Level Four schools are a subset of Level Three schools, so we look at, and it's a decision of the commissioner, and so the commissioner looks at the lowest-performing Level Three schools and names some of them as Level Four. Level Five schools, a school can only be named Level Five after it's gone through a turnaround process, usually three years of turnaround at Level Four before a school is named Level Five. And presently, in this state, we have four Level Five schools and one Level Five school district. So just a quick overview of the five levels that we have, plus the commendation system, commendation schools. And then now just to look at your data. So remember how I told you percentile rank is important, because that determines who's at Level Three? And you have to be higher than 20% in your percentile rank in order to exit Level Three. So what I want to point out to you is that your middle-high school is at the eighth percentile rank, a percentile rank of eight. Keep in mind that there are, you have a seven-through-12 school, and there aren't too many of them in the Commonwealth. So you're, that's a small group of schools from which your middle-high school is competing to move out. And so they are at the eighth percentile. Charlton Street is at the sixth percentile, and West Street is at the seventh percentile. So I want to point out to you that, you know, there's improvement that needs to be made to get to the 20th percentile. And just encouraging you to stay the course as you work on things like your accelerated improvement plan to address this issue. But remember how I said that you have a combination of factors at play here? Even if your schools were at or 20%, or, you know, above the 20th percentile ranking, in Southbridge, you would still have schools in Level Three because of two other factors. One is that you have lower performance, you have in the bottom 20%, the lowest 20% of performance for some of your subgroups, and they are listed here. So at the middle-school, high-school, your middle-high school, your subgroups that are among the lowest 20% in the state are your white students, students with disabilities, low-income students, Hispanic-Latino, and ELL and former ELL students. So there's a need to target subgroups at the middle-high school in order to move ahead as well. And typically, what we see is, when you address the needs of the subgroup, often, you know, the entire school will rise as well. So this can help to focus some of your efforts. At Charlton Street School, we see that low-income students and students with disabilities are what we call focus subgroups. And then at West Street, students with disabilities, low-income, and Hispanic-Latino, and ELL and former ELL students are focus subgroup students as well. Then going to the far right of the table that I've shared with you here, another reason, and this is often not described as much, and I didn't say anything about this in the beginning of my presentation, but a school can also be named as Level Three per state statute if they have a lower-than-expected level of participation in MCAS. And that's not just for the aggregate, it's also for your subgroups. So of particular concern is at the middle-high school, last year, you had less than 90% of your ELL or former ELL students participate in MCAS. And, you know, we want to, as a state, we want to make sure that students actually participate in the statewide test. So we tie the accountability system to making sure that you correctly identify students who need to take the test and actually get them to take it during the testing window is very important. So at the middle-high school, even if the other... So, at the middle-high school, even if the other issues had been addressed and you were performing above the 20th percentile, you would still be labeled as Level 3 because of your participation rate in MCAS. At West Street School, you would have, that school could have only achieved as high as Level 2 because it had less than 95%. So, it was between 90 and 95% participation rate on MCAS. So, in terms of, you know, what to do, obviously, I think this is probably one of the easiest ones to address, is to make sure that you have full participation of your students in MCAS. Let me just remind you, though, that, you know, before you get too, you know, overly concerned about this, keep in mind that your subgroups are very small here in Southbridge. If you have, I think approximately, your class size, I think is about 110 students. So, your 10th-grade cohort of students at the middle-high school are 110 students, but as we look across the school, so your tested grades are 7, 8, and 10. So, when you take that group of students and pull out just the ELL and former ELL students, we're talking about a, you know, relatively small number of students. So, if you start missing like five of them from MCAS participation, that's when it becomes, you can really quickly go below that 90%. So, I would encourage the middle-high school to pay attention to that this year, making sure that you get as many students participating as you possibly can. And a pretty quick remedy may be something to feel even more proud about next year, to quickly address that issue while you're going about addressing these harder-to-reach issues as well. So, I want to talk to you a little bit about the trend in your data, and this is again from a very, very high level, and there are people who could explain your data in much greater clarity than I can. But one of the things that is interesting to you to see that plays out in your accountability data as well, remember I talked to you about that PPI index, 0 to 100 points that we give for schools? And it's based in part, not entirely, but in part, on the percentage of your students, how your students are doing on MCAS frankly. And the thing that you would notice about your data is that you have a bit of a curve, that from 2011, if you look at your ELA data, starting at 44% of your students were proficient or higher, and then the data goes down a bit to its lowest point, it's nadir in 2013, but then ticks up in 2014. And that's, you can see that across ELA and math. Science isn't completely the same, but overall, from 2013 to 2014, there is a positive change. So, glad to see that, want to encourage more of that. But let's just see how that then plays out in your accountability data. Not surprisingly, we have a similar trend in those gap-closing points that I talked about before, that PPI, that Progress and Performance Index. You had 36 points in 2011, 36 points in 2012, dipped down to 32 points in 2013, but then rising up to 68 points in 2014. So, a better, you know, an improving sign, one, though, that you want to continue on with. As a reminder, for next year, when your 2015 data comes out, you will still carry with you, though, cumulative points from 2012 all the way through 2015. So, those lower years, in some ways, and again, as a superintendent, I felt this as well, they continue to stay with you even after the, those years are behind you. So, this will be a multi-year process still. You have many, you have, still years ahead of you of work that needs to be done because of the way that we want to see that this is sustained effort over time and, as well. So, I'm going to turn it over now to my colleague, Brooke Clenchey, who will tell you a little bit more about the district review process, and I'll chime in. Just, actually, just quickly, let me say one quick thing about district review, and then, as it relates to accountability, and then Ms. Clenchey can tell you more about how it works relative to just the process of completing the review. The only way that a district itself can be named as a Level 5 district, so remember, most schools are named based on their lowest-performing school. However, as is in the case of Lawrence, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education voted to make Lawrence a Level 5 district, to name that the entire district was Level 5. That can only be done if there was a district review completed within the last 12 months. So, the board can't take that action, they can't have that vote occur unless there was a thorough district review, and Mr. Curtin oversees that work, completed within the last 12 months. Your last review is much more than 12 months old. So, I wanted to end with that piece about how it relates to accountability, and Ms. Clenchey can tell you more about how it relates to work that is coming for your district.
Thank you. Thank you, and good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. I was here in, I believe, October last time, and for the new members that are sitting around the table this evening, I too am a former superintendent. I was a superintendent for 13 years, and most recently, I spent a fair number of years, almost five years, in Winchendon. That was, as some of you may recall, an underperforming, we were declared underperforming the same time that you folks were declared underperforming. And I know that I had mentioned to your school committee members the anguish and the frustration and the challenges that were before us, and at times, it just seemed never-ending to try to get out of where we were at. But it's doable. It's doable. Prior to coming into the department, I had several years in Ashland, and so I finished as superintendent of schools there before taking on the role as Senior Associate Commissioner with the agency. And I'm going to just speak briefly about the district review, and I think that Dr. Johnston laid out very clearly that a district review is a really important part of the work that the department does in partnership with our schools and districts. You haven't had one relatively recently. Quite honestly, I think it's time, and we're looking forward to coming in and doing a new one. So, we have slated Southbridge Public Schools for a full-scale review in the early part of the new school year. Now, Mr. Curtin is here, he, and I would like to mention too, I thought you asked outstanding questions this evening, and Mr. Curtin definitely is the man to ask those questions of. He is really our go-to data person in the department. And so, if he, and I heard him say a couple of times, if he says something about, we'll take a different look at that next time, he will go back now and do that. He was absolutely the right person to have here this evening. He also oversees the review teams that go out. We do approximately 20 reviews in the course of a year, sometimes a little bit more, 21, 22. They're very extensive. I would also suggest, though, that in the last five to seven years, they've changed quite dramatically, and I think, I remember when they were coming into Winchendon, and we had worked so hard, and they sat down with me at the beginning and they said, do you have any comments that you'd like to make before we even start? And I remember saying, yes, find something good that we're doing, because we'd worked so hard. Just find the good things that we're doing. I thought it was important that our staff was validated, that our administrative team was validated, and we knew we were doing good things. And one of the strengths of a review is that when they come in, they take a really deep dive. And I really like how the reviews are being done now, and if you take a look at the screen, you'll see that there are six components, and Mr. Curtin's going to speak to you about these in a minute. The leadership and governance, these are all like separate buckets, if you can imagine, where the team will come in and do a deep dive on every one of these. So, he's going to speak a little bit about that. The leadership and governance is one bucket. The curriculum and instruction, another. Assessment, human resources and development, student support, financial and asset management. Mr. Curtin oversees the pulling together of the team that will come in. He will have his staff do a lockstep process with your school district, so everybody knows what's coming. There are no surprises. From my perspective, having gone through a newer one as well as an older one, I think that you'll really like this process. It is a chance for us to help better support you as we dive a little bit deeper into your district and see what other pockets we can come and help support you with. I said this before, and I would say this again, in October, I had mentioned that I felt that your AIP was a good, solid AIP, and I stand here tonight and tell you the same thing. It's on track. We know that you can't go from point A to B quickly. We understand that. There are going to be glitches, there are going to be turns, but you also heard tonight that there are some good areas of strength for you tonight, that there's been some good movement made forward. You want to capitalize on that. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Curtin right now, and he will just talk through in a little bit more detail each one of these buckets that they will be looking at when they come in.
Thank you. So, I fairly recently took over the district review process. In addition to my other responsibilities at the department, in October, I took over the office. And we have set up the review process in conjunction with these six standards here. And we have already scheduled, at least in a broad way, a review for Southbridge for next October. We do not typically do reviews in September, but we let schools get off the ground a little bit, but we are, we are going to, Southbridge is going to be our first district that we review in the 2015-2016 school year. What you see before you are the six standards, as Senior Associate Commissioner Clenchey mentioned, and these are the standards by which we review a district. And let me just get into a little bit of the high level before I go into each one of these. It's important to note that this is an independent review. There are not ESE members typically, unless we have to fill a spot at the last minute, typically on the team. We have a group of contractors that work with us to serve on the review team, typically former district employees, some superintendents, curriculum directors, finance managers, and so on, that we assemble a team, usually a six-person team that goes in and split the standards up with that number and does a deep review of each of the standards. Each of the standards here, so around leadership and governance, for example, we would speak to the superintendent, we would talk to the superintendent about the relationship with the school committee, about the relationship with the union, what the processes are the superintendent uses as a leadership focus in the school district. And it's really to get as deep as an understanding as we can possibly get about the practices that are in place in the school district, and the superintendent's vision for how the school district should be run in that leadership and governance standard. Around curriculum instruction, every review that we do, we go into every single school in the district. So, we are, it is a district review, but it is not just focused at the central office. We do classroom observations in every single school in the district. So, there's a protocol that the reviewers use to go in and observe the classrooms, and we come out with a rich set of data according to the rubric based upon those observations. So, that falls under, in the curriculum instruction category. The next standard is assessment. This looks at, as we were talking about ANET before, for example, we look at what assessments are done in the, in the school district in terms of interim informative assessments. We also look in that assessment bucket around the use of data in general. How are data being used in the district? How are they being used in the central office? How are they being used in the, for school improvement teams, for example? So, it really focuses on both assessment and data. On the human resources and professional development standard, here's where we focus on both the state of the educators in the, in the school district. As the new educator evaluation regulations have passed in the Commonwealth, it takes, this is where that comes into play and how our educators are being evaluated, what's the implementation level within the school district of the new educator evaluation regulations, and this is where we would get into some of the DDM issues, for example, that we were talking about before. So, that's, that's the human resources. And then, on the PD side, we look at the professional development opportunities that are offered in your school district and how they're laid out, what access the educators have to these professional development opportunities, how often they have access to it, and other areas around professional development. Student support is a bit of a catch-all standard, but it primarily looks at how students of various backgrounds and various levels of learning ability, various levels of English language proficiency are supported. So, is there differentiated instruction in the classrooms based upon the students' needs, whether that be they are a student with disability or they're an English language learner? This is where we get into some of the climate issues, climate and culture issues around student support in a particular school, and discipline practices, and so on and so forth. That all falls under the student support bucket. And then, the last one is, we look at the financial and asset management standard. This is where we have someone that with a finance background come in and look at the budgeting process that's used, both at the budgeting process between the school committee and the school district, and also then, how that budget is laid out in terms of where, how the money is allocated for what is most needed in the school district, how that process has worked, and we do a comprehensive review around that process. So, that's a sort of quick overview of the, of the standards that are used. Our goal, and this is a little bit of a shift of what's been happening in the past, our goal is to have this entire review process take place in about a 13 to 14-week time period, so from the time in which we are on-site, and that on-site portion is a, usually a four-day that the team is here for. Then, there is a writing period and an editing period where we do a lot of fact-checking and so on, and then we try to get that report published back to you as quickly as possible, and usually, like I said, somewhere in that 12 to 14-week time period. And then, once we do publish the report, we have a standing offer to school committees to come back and review what is, what has come out in the report. So, I will make that offer available to you next, you know, sort of next fall, when that, when the review is, the report is complete. And the report itself is a, we have set it up now, and it's not to say that we might not change the way they look and the feel of the reports, but the way they're currently constituted is by each one of these standards, we look at both strengths and challenges within each one of these standards, so it is not just a, an audit that picks out all the challenges and the findings. It does look at both the strengths and the challenges within each one of these, within each one of these standards. That's a general overview. I hope that that's comprehensive, at least for, at this point. I think in terms of the entire presentation, we'd be happy to take your questions on the accountability system or the district review process at this time.
Thank you. I'll start down, I'm sorry, I'll start with Mr. Vecchia. Mr. Vecchia?
Thank you, good evening. I'm Counselor Vecchia. I have a question about dropout rates. I read in a paper about a week ago that the dropout rate in the Southbridge school system is now 69, we graduate, but they stated 69.4. So, I would assume that 30% of the people are dropping out, and is that correct to begin with?
So, the first half of your statement is correct. The graduation rate that we published last week, I think you've quoted it correctly, at 69.2%, I think, for the cohort in 2014. That is correct. But one should not assume that the remainder from 100 to down to 69.2% have dropped out of school. As a matter of fact, for example, we account for 100% of the students when we release the graduation rate reports. Specifically to Southbridge, for instance, 11% of the 2014 cohort are still in your school. So, they have an opportunity to be five-year graduates, okay? There are other popular, other percentages of that, of the remainder could be that they have received a high school equivalency, for example, or that they were expelled from school is another bucket to report. So, it is not that there is a 30.8 dropout rate across the district. As a matter of fact, I think the dropout rate for the 2014 cohort, if I was just looking at it before, was around the 16% number. I could be wrong on that.
Is that for graduation, for the people who will graduate, and that dropout rate?
I'm sorry.
Is that dropout rate for the, is that the graduation rate, the dropout rate?
No, the graduation rate is the percentage of students that graduate in four years. So, that number was 69.2% for Southbridge.
Okay, I understand, okay, that's great. I understand. So, that means there was 31% that didn't graduate.
That means that there were 31% that did not graduate in four years. It does not mean that 31% of the students dropped out.
I understand, you just explain that. Can you give me the primary reason why there is a 31% dropout rate?
Again, you know, I, just to be clear, because I want to make sure clear about this, it is not a 31% dropout rate, okay? There are, 31% of the students did not graduate in four years. in four years. There are many reasons why that doesn't happen. You know, I'm not privy to the reasons of each one, why each one of those kids didn't graduate. But, like I said, 11% of those kids are still in your, in your high school. They could graduate next year and be part of your five-year grad rate.
Which brings me, when it says high school, it says cohort graduation rate. What is the cohort graduation rate?
Sure. So, the cohort graduation rate, we just released the 2014 graduation rate, the 2014 cohort graduation rate. And what that does is, it looks at first-time ninth graders in October of 2010. And, sorry, I was just doing some math there in my head. It looks at the first-time ninth graders back in October of 2010 and follows that cohort across four years. And some kids come in, if they move into Southbridge, for example. Some kids leave if they transfer out of Southbridge. But it follows that cohort across all the way through four years and looks at what percentage of the cohort graduates within four years. And that's the number that was at 69.2% for Southbridge.
Okay, my last and final question is, how do we improve the graduation rate?
Sure. So, there are, you know, obviously, quite simply, the simple answer to that question is to have kids graduate within four years. But ultimately, what we're seeing around the state, and we've seen really good results statewide around increasing graduation rates and lowering dropout rates, what we've seen is a series of multiple pathways that are offered for students, in generally speaking. So, whether that means through credit recovery programs, whether that means for some extended time, differentiated school hours, what have it be, what we're finding more and more is that school districts that are lowering their dropout rates and increasing their graduation rates are moving beyond the traditional sort of seven-to-two school schedule for kids, and, because that doesn't necessarily fit everyone. And it's making sure that kids can have different accommodations and multiple pathways to be able to reach that point of graduation.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Levo, and then Ms. Manah.
I just have a couple of questions real quick. When was the last district review done?
2010.
Sorry. As far as the district review being next October, you did make mention that contractors are coming in for the review process and stuff. Who finances that? Where does that money come from?
So, the district review process is financed through a statewide.
And on the process, you said it was a 13 to 14-week period to do the review, and then another 12 to 14 to put together the data and then give it back to us?
No, I think I said 13, and then I said 12, so that made it seem confusing. So, I apologize for that. So, the entire process is somewhere between 12 and 14 weeks, meaning we come on, there's onsite work, there's work done back at the department, there's editing, and so on and so forth. The entire process from the day we step foot in, in Southbridge to the day the report is on our website is typically between 12 and 14 weeks.
And how much would this impact the school day, the students' learning or anything like that?
Yep. So, the majority of the review is done in, if you think about it, in central office, because it's with interviews with central office staff. The impact on schools, I would say, are twofold. The first is, there is, there are meetings set up with principals to learn what's happening in the schools. And then, we do do classroom observations where we do not have any intention of disrupting the classroom. So, but I do want to be clear that we, there is a presence in a classroom of the, of the review team, but the entire idea is to not disrupt the classroom at all.
Thank you. That's all I had.
Ms. Manah?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is, well, my concern is the, the underperformance since 2004. So, I guess I do have a couple of questions. How long before 2004 did you realize that something was happening? And why is it taking so long with the state involvement to get off of this underperforming? If you've been working with our district since 2004, then why has it taken so long? Is this normal? To me, this isn't normal.
Sure.
No?
Okay.
I'll finish up.
No, absolutely. You know, the, this turnaround process of engaging the district and making the type of positive momentum does, does take time. But a lot of it is really based on the leadership that you have at the, with the district. And you have had a substantial change in leadership throughout the course of those years. And, you know, I think the work that we are encouraging you to do right now is really to stabilize, to stay the course with your AIP, so that you don't lose sight of the target that you're on, and then can, you know, gain the traction that you need to make the changes that need to happen. The other piece to that is around alignment and making sure that your goals are just strongly aligned to the actions that are taking place in the schools. And as we go forward, part of this kind of stabilizing that needs to happen right now, that I think is happening, is also then to make sure that all systems, both the support provided by the state and, most importantly, the support that your team is providing here, is closely aligned. So, we are actually working very deliberately towards that. We are engaging all parties who are coming into contact with Southbridge in making sure that none of us are going in any other opposite direction other than what is clearly laid out in your AIP. And we are also, at this point, introducing the District and School Assistance Center into the fabric of the district, which is another support provided by the department to make sure that we do accelerate these changes. So, within the next few weeks, Superintendent Stanton will organize, will be in charge of a meeting that's coming up very soon, where we'll have your plan managers, your plan monitor, I believe, although I could be wrong. Yes, very good. Our DSAC center staff, the mentor for Superintendent Stanton, Superintendent Stanton's team, making sure that we are closely in this groove, this alignment around your AIP, and marshaling the right resources to move you ahead in a very strategic way. So, while we can't undo what has not clicked yet in the past, we are making sure that we don't have ongoing issues as we move forward by very tight alignment.
All right. But you didn't know, you didn't answer, maybe you don't know the first part yet. How long before 2004 did you realize that there was a problem? And, you know?
Sure. So, really, the new accountability, you know, the, the change from, and the introduction of MCAS, frankly, is when the state began to have a light that we could shine on districts. So, you know, it's certainly been growing. No Child Left Behind came into effect and helped us to know more. That was our first accountability system. And No Child Left Behind, and that system allowed us to see that there were issues in Southbridge and leading up to the 2004 designation. So, from '98, essentially, the introduction of the No Child Left Behind accountability system in 2004 was that period that led up to the naming of the district as underperforming in 2004.
And I guess, just one more question, if I may, Madam Chair. What is the, I see the school district is reaching out to the parents and trying to get involvement. But what is the DESE doing on their part for these underperforming school districts to reach out to the, the parents and the communities?
Well, we provide resources and supports to help districts know how to do it, but we don't actually do it ourselves. So, we have a great array of resources to bring. And from everyone, from your plan manager to the DSAC group that I talked about before, to the mentor for Superintendent Stanton, they all have a background and expertise in that. But they, the work is actually always done by the district. And again, as a former superintendent, I can tell you, it is the work of the district to do the outreach to the parents, but it's the support that we provide from the department to know more of how to do it.
And I think our oversight in the, of the AIP process, where it is a strategic objective and making sure that when we're monitoring and monitoring the district, that's really our mechanism for, for doing that, is to make sure, is through that AIP process. But as Dr. Johnston said, it's not something that we would do actively as part of the department. That's just not our role.
Thank you very much.
And if I can just add an extra, an additional point, too. With the notion of the DSACs being able to move in and become part of the support here, I think you'll find very, very helpful. Again, as a district that was really blessed to have the support of DSACs, I found, I found it invaluable. So, I'm very excited to see that piece come in. I also agree with Dr. Johnston. I mean, we've had meetings together across the agency, not just one unit or another. As an agency, we've come together and had meetings to say what's best for Southbridge. Going back to the parent outreach and such, when this review team comes in, your parents will have an opportunity, as will, you know, the board of select members. Everybody has an opportunity at that point in time.
So, thank you. That's a good point that we, that I should have mentioned. Part of the district review process includes a series of focus groups with both teachers, union officials, town leaders, parents. We have a parent focus group. So, we have a series of focus groups that we just, the whole point of the review process is to get the most comprehensive picture we can of what's actually happening within the school district.
Thank you very much.
Dr. Page?
You're welcome, Madam Chair. Thank you. So, this is maybe a little bit of a technical question, but the accountability system highlights under waiver. Basically, what I'm interested in, the progress and performance index that you calculate, that's a number, right? And that says it's based on performance, it's a performance measure that includes student growth, the LA math, science, and high school indicators. Is there a very clear mathematical formula that's used? And does our district know that and have a good understanding of it, and how our data has been plugged into it so that they can use it as a learning tool, maybe to develop models for how we need to achieve that 75% magical, or 75 magical number for on-target?
Right. So, I won't speak directly for Superintendent Stanton, but I would, my, I think they do have an understanding of the formula. We have a lot of resources available about how do, how the formula works to varying degrees. If you want to look at it from 10,000 feet, if you want to get all the way down to the, the finest grain of data possible, we've put together a series of resources to help whatever level you're, of understanding you're looking for to be able to, to be able to understand.
Personally, I would think that would be critical, right? That you have a good understanding of, you know, what that means and all of the data that feeds into it. And really, where the, you know, you have all these little subgroups and so forth that can have huge impacts on that and how things are weighted. I think we need to have a really good understanding of that in order to really move forward.
And I just think, if I could add one thing, too, we, it's a continuous sort of cycle of data inquiry, right? So, that we are not only providing high-level numbers at the index level for the school that, right, but we also provide even lower levels of data down to the student level so that the districts and school can have access to all of their students' data down to the item analysis level. So, you can look at exactly what questions, what question types, for example, students are having trouble with. So, it really does run the gamut of the level of data analysis that you can get into. But we really want to make sure that the district has access to whatever level they need in order to be able to impact expression.
So, all of that is available from you?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
So, that's, that's, that's useful to know. Okay, good. Thank you.
Down here, Mrs. Quinney, did you have some questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to Mr. Johnston, you have laid out beautifully what it would take for a district to get from level three, out of level three, to level two. My question for you would be, what as a school district would we have to do to get from level four to level three? Be my first question. I'll have a lot.
Sure, sure, absolutely. So, the process that we have is really based on this, this AIP process that you have, and the monitoring of it, and the success that we see over time. So, you know, when I show you your trend, your data trend, looking at both that data trend and the on-the-ground information that we have about the systems that are in place in the district, really have to be tied together for us to make that determination. So, we need to see a solid trend in your data over time, and we need to know, to make sure that when we release that responsibility back to the district, to say you are on-target, you are moving ahead, you don't need the intervention of the state as much as you have had in the past, that you have the systems in place to be self-sustaining in that way. So, the emphasis on the, each of the goal areas from within the AIP are very important. And you need to just stay, just laser-like focused on those as you move forward. That, then, obviously, as a connection to the data, staying focused on those, making those changes as laid out in your AIP is reasonably calculated to have an impact on your data and to create the type of trend that I'm talking about. So, that is a decision that we would look at, at the, on an annual basis, particularly when your data become available. And this next year, keep in mind that that will be across the state a little later, although most likely, your MCAS data, because you are taking MCAS, not Park, will be available on the same timeline you've been used to in the past. So, we'd be looking to mark, hopefully, some improvement next fall, and then determine what, what we see. Is there a trend? Do we have a growing trend? What kind of confidence does the commissioner have? And it will be a decision of the commissioner himself, that you have shown the conditions that will allow the sustainability to happen for this district.
Thank you. And based on the data that you've presented to us tonight, it appears one might be able to assume that you're looking for a four-year trend in a positive direction?
Sure.
Or?
Yeah, the...
Given those 32s carry over?
Right, right. There is not a hard and fast formula that it has to be four years. It certainly can't be, I would say, one and two is probably a little, two is not enough.
Trends and patterns?
Yes.
Very important, yeah. We really want to make sure that when we make decisions, particularly about level four, the term that we use, it's not very scientific, is unstuck. Does the district or the school appear to be unstuck? And what evidence do we have of that? And in a sense, that's what Mr. Curtin and members of the assessment team are doing along with my accountability staff, that we are bringing to the commissioner and sharing with him to help him understand to what extent the district, the trend is showing the right direction. Because we know that we're not going to stay here until you have everything 100% corrected. But we want to make sure that you're on the right pathway to where we can then exit the district from level four. We would prefer, of course, to exit the district to a level two or one status as opposed to a three, but we'll make that decision as we get closer to it. Schools that, schools, not districts, schools that exited level four, this year only exited to level three. So, it is, it's conceivable that you could exit to level three.
In the same vein, I think if our data trends up, continues to trend up as it has been, I think one of the challenges that faces us is that stability piece. So, right now, we're in a certain place, and we're trending in a certain direction. If stability isn't there, regardless of the next transition, how we stabilize is very important for the district in moving forward, in addition to our numbers improving and continuing to improve. But that sustainability, we need to have stability in order to have that sustainability is what I've heard. Would you, all the heads are nodding, for people that can't see that on TV. Also, I wanted to ask you, as a school committee, what do you see as our role in moving the district forward regarding, obviously, we're all supportive of the AIP. We know the AIP well. We know the goals and where we're heading. But as a committee ourselves, what role can we play in moving the district from where we are to be phenomenal to be level two or level one when we get out of level four? But what do you see as our role in that?
So, keep in mind, and I think, I'll speak briefly, and then I'm sure that Ms. Vecia will want to fill in more, that your role is really around, obviously, policy, budget, and hiring the superintendent. And so, clearly, there's a role that you have with making sure you have a permanent superintendent when the committee makes that decision to move forward on that, that is, you know, clearly your pick for being able to move that AIP continually forward. I would say that, again, having been a superintendent in my work with the school committee, making sure that you keep your agendas aligned to this work, you know, I think your job as a school committee is to not allow the district to go shooting after a million different topics, but to really, for you as well, to stay focused on this very work. And so, when you're developing your agendas, what you talk about, what you study, the guests you bring before you, all making sure that they're tightly aligned to this work and not allowing, you know, taking up the administration's focus away from, taking this administration's focus away from the very crucial work that you're doing. So, staying strategic, staying aligned, I think is very important.
Yeah. I would absolutely agree. And I think if there are some key words that you heard tonight, and I couldn't overemphasize them enough, stability is so critical right now. You know, as we had talked, you know, about a review, we just felt that it would have been nice maybe to have done one this year, but you know what? It wasn't fair to Southbridge. And so, we took a look back, and we, Dr. Johnston and I... You know, as we had talked, you know, about a review, we just felt that it would have been nice maybe to have done one this year, but you know what, it wasn't fair to Southbridge. And so, we took a look back and we, Dr. Johnston and I had a number of conversations, said, you know what, we really need them to stabilize first, and then we'll come in and do the review. And, because we feel strongly that if you can stabilize, I see part of your role right now in stabilizing the district. He's absolutely right, too, I mean, the department can't help you to choose your superintendent, this is 100% your job, you know? And, you know, I think right now, certainly, it's nice that you've got somebody in that already knows the district, knows, you know, the fog eye, knows where you're headed, and that's probably going to make for a nice transition during this time period, you know, as you decide where to go from here. I would also agree with Dr. Johnston, you helped to set the tone for the district, you helped to set the direction, and then you have to get behind, and you have to be the best cheerleader ever, you know, you really do have to do that, that piece. And I think it sends a great message to your district, and when I look back, some of the very best years I've had as a superintendent were when I had that committee that was so behind me, you know, 100%, 100% of the way. So, I would also agree, laser focus, and I think at the end of the day, and it kind of gets back to the question that you were asking earlier, that sustainability, I mean, that's what we want at the end of all this, is that you're self-sufficient, that you're so sustainable that we can walk away, and you're just going to continue to fly, that's what we want. So, I would say those two key words right now, stability and aiming towards sustainability.
And my last question is for you, Ms. Quinney, you had said that you felt that we had an excellent AIP that we were working off of. I know that AIPs, we have to review them, and they tend to change over the next year, but would it be safe to say that our AIP may not have been as laser-focused and solid in the past, which has kind of led us a little bit astray? And now that we have a solid AIP that is focused on our district and what truly it needs to move forward, that this process is starting, and if we continue to make those gains, that we'll be in a much better place than we were five, 10, however many years ago?
Well, I guess a couple of quick things, and I'm actually going to let Mr. Curtin address that question, because it's a great question. I think, too, sometimes, you know, as you grow as a district and as changes happen, sometimes you have to adjust things along the way, and I think that that's probably where you're at right now. You've probably made some adjustments and you're ready to take that next step. That would be my first takeaway, my first response to that question, but Mr. Curtin, I'm sure you've got some comments?
Yeah, I mean, what I would say to that is, you know, I mean, I saw, from my colleagues, some nodding of the heads, but, you know, I wasn't there, so I don't know the answer to that, and I don't want to speak to it if I wasn't, if I wasn't completely involved. What I can say is, is that we have amped up the standards of what is going to be in an AIP, and we want to make, we want it so that it provides you with a laser-like focus on where to direct your attention. So, that's, you know, what was in past AIPs, you know, I'm not real sure, but that's what our intent is moving forward, and that's the standard by which we're going to sort of evaluate the AIP process moving forward.
Excellent, thank you.
I can just add that too briefly, that, you know, the AIP process is sort of a, in a way, a souped-up district improvement plan, you will always have a district improvement plan, all districts have plans, the proof, though, is the implementation. And so, I wouldn't say that you're, I don't want to, as has been said by my colleagues, we don't want to indict your previous plans, but I think that the, we see a solid plan right now, and we see the emphasis on implementation and keeping those two, you know, I think having a good plan, making sure it's well implemented are the two pieces to stay focused on right now, and it gives us some confidence for you and some momentum building that we want you to stay on.
I think a term I used last time I was here in October, too, was fidelity, you know? Learning walks, for example, I know that you've had a learning walk, for example, and I've found those to be very, very useful, but it needs to be done with fidelity, it needs to be done with people that are really appropriately trained, with a proper buy-in. Though, that was one small thing in my district that really amped up our game, because the whole district bought into it. We were one of the first districts to buy into the process. In fact, our teachers' union also bought into it, the president of the union bought into it, and we were able to do so many things for something so simple, you know? But the fidelity, I agree with Dr. Johnston, the fidelity is important when you're implementing plans or processes.
And if I could just add one more thing, and, you know, one of the things that I want to make sure, and again, I've only been doing this, this responsibility since October, but, is to make sure that the AIPs, as we go from year to year, are not independent things, right? We don't want to have one AIP and then see how did we do in one year, and then let's develop a brand-new AIP and see how we do in this year and moving forward. They really should be about continuous improvement, and I want them to, and I've been doing some thinking around how they relate to each other and how they transition from one year to the next, so that we're not just repeating the same process on an annual basis, and that we're thinking about it as a continuous improvement document.
Thank you, I appreciate that, and knowing that, and having seen the process kind of play out and see an AIP written with certain standards, those particular tools were implemented at that time, then the next plan was written, and teachers have had to transition through a lot of different challenging things, and we have Common Core, we have all these things that are being piled on, and teachers are working really hard to kind of keep up with that, and I know the district has tried to minimize those changes, so it's encouraging to me to hear you say that, knowing that going into next year, we'll be building off what has been deemed a solid plan, and being able to fine-tune things in order to move us forward, so, I think you'll...
Counselor Steves?
Thank you, Madam Chair. One question I had is, Mrs. Quinney's question is, what do you see the town council's role and the larger community's role in supporting the district and making sure these changes happen?
That's a good question.
So, the town council in particular obviously has a key budgetary role, and so, we want to make sure that, you know, obviously, the finances are available for the school to do what they need to do, but in an accountable way, I mean, accountability is certainly a theme, and so, we're certainly are not asking for a blank or recommending a blank check, but, you know, making sure that there is, again, very similar type of thing of, if this is the priority, if the priority of the district is laid out through the plan that they are working on, making sure that your continual support for the district budgetarily is in alignment with that plan, and I think that's a key piece. And I think just staying involved, you know, having, again, worked with the city council in the past, you know, knowing that you care, that you attend events, that you're aware of what's going on in the schools, that you know who the population of the district is, is also very, very important, that you know the type of students who are in school here, what their needs are, not just remotely, but through some firsthand contact with them, also helps to keep your work very authentic.
I would agree, and you should be hearing, too, again, over and over again, alignment, 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 you know? And the other thing I would say, too, is I certainly commend everyone for being here this evening. This is wonderful to see both groups here around one table talking about this, so I'm very appreciative that everyone is in the room tonight.
Also, I don't know if you're done. Okay. Also, I was wondering, looking at the charts you were showing earlier, you showed that a big PPI jump from 32 to 68 in the past year, can you explain how that happened? What specific areas of improvement did you see? What specific areas of need do you still see?
So, it's never, is it completely, sorry, I'm just, okay. So, it's never, it's never completely, it's easy to zero in on how you go from a 32 to a 68, for example, in the PPI, okay? But if you look at the MCAS performance from 13 to 14, okay, where you see, where you're seeing a five percentage point jump in ELA and science and a three percentage point jump in math, okay? We consider anything over two percentage points to be significant, okay? So, you saw a significant improvement in all three subjects, and that's going to, well, I could, do have it right here, I guess, but yet you saw a significant improvement in all three subjects, so that your gap narrowings were either on target or just below that. A 32 frankly represents a declining, right? So, a 68 while not meeting the on-target number that we're looking for, that 75, really shows improvement in getting towards that. And the key thing to understand about the PPI, though, is, it's all, it is really year-dependent, they're weighted, so you got to really keep your attention on it, because, you know, if you have a bad year, like you might have had in 2012, for example, that bad year stays with you, although it's weighted less, it stays with you for four years. But in terms of your general question, I would point to just the proficiency improvement, which is going to impact your CPI in, from 13 to 14 in all three subjects.
And where do you see the biggest needs that we still need to address? I noticed, for example, that that chart talks, it has a bunch of zeros specifically in reducing the failure rate.
Right, yeah, so, right, so that's a good, that's a good point. So, there are, you haven't received some points in the calculation for reducing the percentage of students in warning failing. One of the things that the commissioner stressed to us when he had us designing the new system, is he really wanted us to focus on the entire spectrum of achievement. So, in other words, not just focus on the kids who are real close to proficient and just get them over that line, but focus on the kids who are also at warning failing and get them moving towards proficient, and you'll notice in the system, we also give credit for moving kids beyond proficiency into an advanced. So, we want to focus on the entire education, the entire achievement spectrum, so if I can look at, just very quickly looking at those numbers, that'd be one thing to focus on, is to continuing, continually moving all students towards proficiency and not just those that are closest to proficiency.
Sean Moriarty, Sean wanted to go?
Yeah, so, one thing, as we look towards the 2015 accountability determinations, okay, and this is, this gets to the question that the gentleman asked me about the graduation rate. The 2000, this year's accountability determinations that we will release in next fall, there's a lag in the graduation rate, so that 69.2% is the graduation rate that's going to be used in the accountability determination for our next accountability determinations, so that is a decline. So, the high school from that perspective is going to be looking at a challenge in terms of their PPI because of the graduation rate, but it's just one of seven indicators that are used. So, there's plenty of other options and areas to be able to make up for that, but that graduation component is already there for, to, you know, that's going to be part of the accountability determination.
Actually, to follow up on the graduation rate, do you, do you take into account kids that just sort of disappear? That move out of state?
Yeah.
They're not in the system at all in Massachusetts.
Right, so, that's a couple of different questions there. We have an extremely, and we're proud of it, we have an extremely strict methodology when it comes to the graduation rate. We do not allow districts, we don't allow students to just, quote, disappear. Where we have the ability to, to check what the districts are telling us, we do. So, for example, if Southbridge tells us that student John Smith transfers to Dudley-Charlton, for example, okay, we actually verify that. So, if that student does not show up in Dudley-Charlton, we count that student as a dropout here for Southbridge. Other areas around the graduation rate where we differ from some states, we only count a regular high school diploma as graduating in our graduation rate. So, if you get a high school equivalency, or you get a competency determination, those are non-graduates as far as the graduation rate goes. So, we do everything we can to, we don't inflate our numbers by any stretch, and we do everything we can to give the utmost accurate picture of what the graduation rate is in the district.
I told you there would be a problem if I got the microphone, and now I'm going to ask, now I'm asking the questions. Yeah, exactly, no, no, no. And actually, Rob, would you mind just mentioning about re-engagement and the points that schools can get for re-engagement? Because it would speak to how we can, schools can earn credit for those students who appear to have dropped out.
So, last year was the first year where we included a component in the accountability system where you can get bonus points for re-engaging students, because, because the graduation rate is part of the accountability system, we don't want it to be a disincentive for you to go out and find kids that have dropped out of your school, right? We want you to still re-engage those kids and bring them back into the school community. So, we've actually added extra credit into the accountability system that if you re-engage multiple dropouts, and when I say multiple, I mean two, where if you actually just go and re-engage multiple dropouts and bring them back into the school system, we actually give you extra credit points.
That was part of the plan behind the Ombudsman Program that we have, that we brought into the district, that's actually happening now.
Great.
So, I'm glad to hear that.
Great.
Counselor Moriarty, did you have a question?
Sure, thank you. Just kind of following off on that, in terms of the re-engagement, student, for whatever reason, drops out, say, that around Columbus Day weekend, whether it's because the district goes out and tries to re-engage the student, whether it's a legal issue, whether it's in order for continuation of benefits, what have you, student returns, say Thanksgiving time. Student leaves again, doesn't come back February, from February vacation, is that counting, if I recall correctly, in the past, that one student is now counting as two dropouts? Is that correct still?
No. So, the, we count, student can drop out, drop in, drop out, drop out, seven times, and that student will count as, if it ends up as a final dropout, that count, that student will count one time as a dropout, and it should be noted that we give school districts till October 1st of the following school year. So, if a student drops out during this school year, as long as that student re-enrolls by the following October 1st, we actually remove the student as a dropout, but we only count students one time in the dropout rate.
And, excuse me, I think you've more or less answered this, but for the sake of clarity or redundancy, when it comes to the district's struggles, certainly the poor scores on the PPI on MCAS elsewhere, those are not really the problems, those are really the symptoms of the problems. So, what exactly is Southbridge's problem?
It's a very deep question. You know, I think, the, what I would just say, and then I'll turn over to my colleagues, to me, that's the purpose of the district review, right? Is for us to come in for four days and send an independent team in here to get those answers, because what we find on the district reviews is it can be at various points in the system, it can be at the district office, it can be in the school leadership, it can be in the educators, it can be in what have you. So, that's really the point of the district review. If we had that answer right now, we wouldn't have to do the district review, but I think we are going to do that in order to get the best possible answer to that question.
I think, too, that, you know, I'm encouraged to hear about the type of people that you have in place, or that you have, you know, a district leadership team, that you have instructional leaders in your schools, that you have a superintendent with an instructional background, that you have a data specialist, those are the people, you know, we bring you the data from a pretty high level, you know, we're bringing you the data that we have at the state level, the data is available, though, to drill down to, to the individual student level, and then to kind of build out and say, is it, what's the issue in writing? Is it topic development, is it mechanics? You know, what's the issue in math? Is it the ability to answer an open response question, explain your thinking, or is it, you know, more of the computation basics that our students are lacking? None of us are equipped to bring that level of detail to you, but I actually hear about systems you have in the district who can answer that question, and I would certainly turn that question, not now, but that's a great question for, for the future for this district.
You spoke earlier on multiple occasions about the turnover rate being problematic, to say the least. When we say turnover rate, are we talking simply superintendents, which we've had a, not to editorialize, but a ridiculous turnover rate there? Are we talking administration in terms of principals and assistant principals, which, again, in my opinion anyways, has been a fairly ridiculous turnover rate? And/or are we talking about faculty and staff at the ground level? Is it a combination of all that? Is it?
All of the above, yeah.
You know, the district review, again, will look at that more deeply, and the data about the retention rate of your staff are publicly available as well, so that's easy to tie into. But again, and maybe I'm biased in this, but having been a district leader, you've got to have a strong person at the helm of the buildings and at the district level as well, and so, making sure that it's not just... And, um, so, making sure that it's not just, you know, having a person over time, just make sure you have the right person.
Right.
Um, and so, the effort around, and what we see so much in my office focusing on turnaround is the human resources piece. Who's doing the hiring? How are decisions being made? What does recruitment look like? Are you getting the right people at all levels, but particularly those key, uh, leadership levels are very, very important. And I think the school committee obviously has a, a key piece to do with that in terms of when they decide to take on, you know, the, the search, which I know is, which I know they know, is a, a key piece of the work that they have to do. And, uh, you know, making sure that you, the city council, the town council, make sure they have the resources, uh, to do that, because, uh, unfortunately, there is often a cost to that process. But again, you know how important it is to get somebody, uh, just right for that position.
If I can just make a comment on that, uh, as well, I, I agree with both of my colleagues here. It's so important for a superintendent to have a solid administrative team. It's not, one person alone can't move a district, it takes a team. And again, you go back to the support, this, again, I'm going, speaking from experience, to have a supportive, uh, school committee and a supportive FINCOM, a supportive Board of Selectment, those were all critical pieces to being able to move a district forward. But at the very core of a district, you really need that strong superintendent and a strong, tight leadership team, all aligned, all rowing in the same direction. Thank you.
Uh, one other question, in, in terms of, uh, attracting, especially since we have two former superintendents here, uh, what is it that would draw, uh, a, a good qualified superintendent, a permanent superintendent, to a community like Southbridge despite the adversity, the Level Four district, the Level Three buildings, uh, the past history? Um, obviously, any, any candidate will simply just do a Google search and they'll see plenty and they'll, I'm sure there's some that that's going to scare off. So, what can we do and what would, uh, a good candidate be looking for in that new home?
Absolutely, absolutely. So, um, first of all, there are people out there who, who want this type of work, uh, who want to be in districts like Southbridge because it is where they find their motivation. I am one of those people. I worked in a different district that didn't, you know, that was not the type of population that you have here, but you're out looking at.
I'm not looking.
Uh, but there are people who, who really have a mission and a vision to be in a Southbridge, and they are out there and you will find one, I know you will. Um, and I think an important thing to keep in mind is that the good candidate, the one you want, is going to be interviewing you as much as you're interviewing them. And if there are issues that you all need to work out, uh, prior to that, then this is the time to do that in terms of having a strong, clear, consistent voice across the city in terms of what you want and, you know, again, if you engage a search firm, they're going to, um, listen to you about that and, you know, it's probably a question to bring to them as well of how do we position ourselves well, uh, that, so that we're ready to support a new superintendent, um, is very, very important too. Um, so, I think keeping in mind that through that interview process, uh, the right person is gonna be asking you questions at the town level about your interest involvement, uh, in the schools and, uh, that a, a, a fresh, uh, outlook on the schools, a unified outlook on the schools will go a long way.
Thank you. I, I think too, I would, I would completely agree with him. I too was one of those superintendents. I was also one of those principals. I, I loved taking on the, the buildings that had the greatest challenges. I loved taking on, uh, superintendent's roles with districts that had great challenges because there was so much reward at the other end, you know, when, when you could see what you could do. So, it's, you know, there are people like that out there that are up to the challenge, that want that challenge, that's what you need to be looking for right now. I also agree with Dr. Johnston, if there are any issues, now's the time to get it all cemented, worked through, untangled, if you will, so that you're moving forward with one voice.
One last question I have, if I may.
Okay, and then I'm gonna give members that haven't had a chance and then gotta wrap things up. Thank you.
Uh, and this is, this is just one that I think many of us have propagated, uh, but the stats that we saw tonight, it's, to a degree, paint a slightly different picture. Historically, uh, in the last several years, I think most of us have thought the elementary schools are pretty rock solid and then it's, it's really the middle school and the high school, but I think chiefly the middle school is the, kind of the common public perception is, is where things go, go awry. Uh, but looking at the percentiles, uh, Southbridge Middle High School is, is doing better than Charlton Street, doing better than West Street. Uh, Eastford Road wasn't on the list, so I'm assuming they're doing pretty well.
Oh, uh, Eastford Road doesn't go up through grade, uh, three, that's your, your primary grade school, right? So, that, we don't have data on them.
Okay, so, am I understanding that information correctly? Uh, or, I'm just, because that's, that's kind of the common perception I think most people have is, is that the middle high school's the, I don't wanna say the troublemaker, but that's where the biggest problems lie, and then the elementary schools are doing pretty well, but some of that data indicates otherwise.
Yeah, so, I mean, a couple of things, um, if I may. The, the first is, and Dr. Johnson, uh, alluded to this in, in his presentation, um, the percentile for the middle high school, um, so, is based on a, that is, the, the school is within the, is it the eighth percentile? I, I forget what the number is.
Southbridge Middle High was at eight?
The eighth percentile of all middle high schools in the state, okay? And that's not a big number of, of middle high schools in the state, right? So, um, that, that number, that, that means that that number can change e, e, uh, much more easily than if there was a large number of schools. Um, there's much more room to move within the percentiles. Um, the other ones, though, are in groups that are larger, um, and if they are in the sixth and the seventh, with, with those numbers. That, those percentiles are, are by grade span, okay? So, within their grade span, within their, of, so that s, schools offering similar grades, they are in the seventh percentile of all schools in the state. Um, so, you know, I'm not sure what the perception is here in Southbridge, um, but the way we use the percentiles to look at, um, not necessarily common populations, but within the common grade spans, um, so that we can, it, it, it's a way for us to look at the schools, those schools fall in the lowest ten percent of schools in, in the entire state.
All right, I'm gonna, Mr. Abrahamson's been patiently reading.
Quick question, you're not suggesting that we must search for something we already have, right?
Do we need to search for a superintendent who you already have?
You said we should engage in a search. I'm saying you're not suggesting that we must search for something we already have.
Correct, correct. That is your choice, your determination, and...
Totally. Your decision.
By looking, if I'm looking for my keys and I find them, I don't have to keep searching for them.
Correct.
Yes.
That's correct.
Thank you. Good question. And Mrs. Donovan, I'm gonna give Mrs. Donovan a chance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. I've spoken to, um, both of Commissioners on the phone multiple times, so it's certainly a pleasure to have you here. I have a couple of questions and then a couple of comments. So, my first question is to Mr. Curtin. Relative to your two thousand fifteen district review, I understand what the end goal will be, you know, what the purpose of the review will be. My question is, will there be any solutions offered or is that our problem to figure out?
Nope, so, um, and, and, and my apologies for, for, for not fully explaining this. Um, when I talked about the sets of the, uh, when I talked about the, um, the way the report comes out, and I talked about how there were strengths and challenges within each of the, um, standards, each of the, each of those come with recommendations.
Okay, so basically you're doing like a SWOT analysis for us and then provide, okay. All right, thank you. That would be helpful, 'cause I think so many times we're given what we should do, need to do, but not necessarily how to do or the best way to that.
Right, and, and not only do we give the recommendation, like I said, we, we offer resources behind the recommendation to be able to help you with those.
Very good, thank you. Uh, my second question is I, I don't know, I'm gonna ask Ms. Stanton, are, is our high school up for a NEASK review soon? I think, if I'm not mistaken, it was perhaps last year and we got a waiver, seem to do a lot of that lately. Um, but then if we, you know, if that's coming up, that, what your review will be, you've mentioned it's an independent review, but that will in fact be separate from the NEASK review, or do you work in, you know, you don't work in partnership with that?
No, it's, it's separate from the NEASK.
Totally separate for your piece will be completely separate from accreditation for a high school?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, and as far as our AIP in connection with this district review, do you take that into consideration or will your independent team, I'm assuming, will be fully aware of what our AIP is, our objectives are, our initiatives are, and tie that in?
That is correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. Those were it for questions. Um, my basic comment was, first of all, to thank you all. I don't think that of all the years that I've been following this, and it's been probably since two thousand four, that we've ever had this. I think this is historic evening for our town, and I can't thank you enough because a lot of people get blamed for the situation, and I think the state itself takes a lot of heat for not doing anything. And I think that people get confused on what our role is as a, as a school committee, what the role of a superintendent is, what the role of DESI is. And one of the reasons that I was advocating for your presence here tonight was clearly to inform the public as well as our town councilors and anybody else, our teachers, we have a lot of people from our school district here. I think there's a lot of misinformation and a lot of that leads to rumor, it leads to blame, it leads to poor self-image, it leads to poor school perceptions, it just, the list goes on and on and on. So, the fact that we are where we are, at least we know where we are and why we are, people are quick to automatically say, oh, just take them over, they don't know what the hell they're doing, take them over. We've learned tonight, it's, there's a process that you just can't let that happen. On the same token, we are involved in an accelerated improvement process that we are on track. We are way far from where we need to be, but at least, and at least it's my hope, that people tonight were informed and know where we are, for what reasons. There's no sugar coating here, it is what it is, these are our, our numbers, and I think that you have provided information and are, and I commend you and I appreciate the fact that you're giving us the tools, I think, that we've been looking for. I personally feel that we're finally getting some important ears that are listening to us and that are willing to help us in our journey, and I, I thank you both. And Ms. Ruchain and Ms. Williams and Pat Jackman and Sally Diaz, you're all people that we need to see and that we need to have here, so I wanna thank you for that. Um, Ms. Clench, you mentioned anguish and frustration.
Those are the experiences that I've had.
Yeah, well, I'm right there with you, girl. Um, I'm not speaking for anybody else except for myself, and when I took on this responsibility, it was strictly to make things better for the kids. And I please hope that nobody forgets, that's why we are here, is the children in those classrooms. We go on learning walks, we interact with these kids, we know their families, we have to do better for them. And, um, you know, you talk about being, setting the tone, the direction, being a cheerleader, don't lose focus. I just want people to know that I'm still hanging in there, but it's, it's not easy. And like you said, and I think the hardest part is, is everybody thinks that you have the power to change the world because you sit up here. And the bottom line is, we do not. We are not out there implementing the AIP. We're observers, we hire a superintendent, we support an agenda. But the misconception is that because things are wrong or a graduation isn't right or an achievement gap hasn't been met, she's at fault, or she's at fault, or it's his fault, that's not happening. And people need to understand, I'm not trying to pass the buck to anybody, but it's not us that is, we're not the sole, um, the sole, um...
Terminate.
The terminate, I guess, is a good word for what is going on. We can't blame past school committees, we can't blame current school committees, we can't blame past superintendents. We'd like to, and sometimes we do, but at the end of the day, this is where we are at. So, I hope that we can move forward from here, we have a lot, an awful, awful lot to do, but thank you all, and please, everybody out there who's here for our kids, remember those kids, and they only get one shot, so please, let's do what's right for them. Thank you.
If I can just make a comment to that, just bring, one of the words that hasn't come up tonight is courage. And, um, I remember way back in my teaching days and they used to say, you know, don't ever complain about the class that you've got, don't ever blame anyone, you take that class for where you got it, and that's your challenge, to take it from there, to move it forward. See this as a fresh start, see this as that opportunity. I think the fact that you're all in the room tonight and I, what I love hearing from you is that kids are first, that, that cannot be lost. And so, there's courage that needs to be done in our work as we move forward to do what's right for our children. So, I, I'm very respectful of your comments.
Thank you.
Mrs. Congdon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know that, um, according to our policy regarding time limit of the meeting, which we are currently at, I didn't know if we wanted to, um, I do have a question, but, um, handle that before we move on.
I think tonight's a kind of a special meeting, that there's some extenuating circumstances here, I'm giving people a little bit of leeway, obviously, so, we'll go ahead and ask your question.
Thank you. Um, just in regards to the report for the, um, review cycle, I was looking at the two thousand ten report and most of it is all the same problems we're having now. Um, it's almost like that hamster on the wheel. But I do have to commend the state in ta, in actively helping us. We've reached out, you're here, I think that's a big step. But my question is, when we do have that next review cycle, um, looking at the report, a lot of the same things from two thousand ten are our big problems now. Um, same comments, page eighteen, um, negative community perceptions of the schools do not accurately reflect the cl, the climate in the schools. I think that is still happening. What, after the review cycle takes place, happens? And what does the state, I know, we, you know, we have to approve that, um, and agree to that review report, so...
So, I think one of the things that'll be different, uh, this time around than the last time around is that, uh, I mentioned before that we'll have the District and School Assistance Center working with the district as we move forward. And, um, what I would envision happening for this district is that, uh, we all want you to be able to exit Level Four status, and if you exit to, to Level Three, which, um, is a strong probability, um, that it's an incremental process, uh, getting out of Four will, uh, most likely lead to Three, you would retain, you wouldn't retain the, uh, support of the, the plan manager, the AIP process would go away, but you would keep the DSAC team. And so, you know, I see sort of a, a graduated, uh, support system for you that, um, uh, moves from where you are right now into, um, continued support and not just pulling it all out at the end of, uh, at the end of this process. But your DSAC team leader will be present, uh, during that review process, and especially at the end when the, uh, preliminary findings are shared with the team and the recommendations from the report, and I've experienced this myself firsthand, to have my DSAC team leader present in the room, planning with me as superintendent about what are we going to do next, how do we take this and turn it into, uh, improvements in this district? Um, and then the resources and supports that they provide helped us to continue to move forward and not just have it be a report that's just put up on a shelf, but has actually lived out, uh, in the daily work of the district. So, um, we will continue to be with you, uh, even after, hopefully, the, um, at some point when the AIP process ends, uh, that you will continue to hopefully receive support as well.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you very much.
I think we're good on questions, is everybody set?
I have one, one more question. I'm referring to the two thousand and ten report. How do you intend, do you intend to take, take the, the stuff that was stated in the two thousand and ten report and take a look at it and compare it to where we stand now and how to build off of that? What worked, what didn't work, where things are?
Yeah, so typically, that's not what we do, actually. Um, it is supposed to be an independent review of the state of the district at the, at, at that point in time of the review. Um, so that, you know, we could spend many pages probably going, discussing what's happened between two thousand and ten and two thousand, well, it'll be October of two thousand and fifteen. Um, but that's not really what the point is. Um, the point is to get a, to get an, an accurate picture of what's happening in the district at that time and what's the necessary action that needs to take place based upon the state of the district at that point in time.
Thank you. Um, I just wanna say, um, thank you again for coming out. I know, well, when we spoke about this and I had inquired about some sort of truncated review, um, or some type of review of the district, that, uh, a lot of thought went into whether that would be wise or how to go about doing that, so I certainly appreciate, uh, the Commissioner's decision with your, obviously, input and influence to, um, have that review, a full-scale review done at the very beginning of next year. Um, I'm very, very pleased with that. I appreciate all the information that you provided this evening. Um, I think for the first time in a long time, I do feel very aligned. Um, as a district, we do have a ways to go. Um, particularly, I, I think Mrs. Donovan almost touched on it and perhaps others, there's alignment, I feel, at the central office level, there's alignment primarily with the district leadership team. The disconnect in alignment, I think, is with the, uh, certain clusters of people in our schools and that just don't have the buy-in. And so, I'm hoping, I don't need to delve into this too much tonight, but maybe you have some ideas for how to get more of a buy-in from everybody in the district, because if we don't believe it, we're never gonna achieve it. I mean, let's be real, that's, that's just what it is. That's, that's just what it is. And I have literally heard people say, we can't do this, it's impossible. If you already, if that's your attitude already, we've already lost the battle. And I wanna try and see if there's something we can do to change that perception and turn that around. That's a conversation for another day. I do want the public to realize that efforts have been made over the last couple of years to work with the Department of Education, not only through the AIP process, but when Superintendent Nembrough was here, the school committee, with the exception of some new members here, wrote a letter to the commissioner and said, this is what we really think we need to move Southbridge to the next level. And some of it had to do with building leadership capacity in the district and some of it had to do with providing trained educator evaluators to come to the district and just provide some assistance in that regard. The commissioner's response to us, this isn't verbatim, but it was kind of like, well, you have an AIP, work within your AIP, we'll support you in your AIP. And at the time, I thought that was really dismissive to us and I thought, I didn't get it. I think after hearing everything that you've said tonight, that makes, his answer makes more sense to me and that, I am grateful for that. Let me just put it that way. So I appreciate that.
Thank you.
And thank you for traveling out and for being so accommodating in light of the snowstorm last week. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. So folks, at this time, two things. I would, you know, like to call a short recess to allow the councilors to leave the dais and thank them again for coming. And the other thing is, to Ms. Congdon's point, our meeting has gone over and we adopted a policy on the meeting, so we need to decide whether we want to continue this meeting tonight or recess it and pick it up next week at this time. So, that's a decision we can make after recess or now? I don't know if there are any thoughts on that. After recess, let's take a 10-minute recess and then we'll pack together. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much. We're returning from our recess. The time is 9:21 PM. Note the presence of all school committee members on the dais as well as Mr. Osborne and Ms. Stanton. And what did I say, 9:20? So now is the point on the agenda where we decide whether we want to proceed with this meeting or what we'd like to do out of respect for people's time. So, I will open it up for discussion.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Dr. Page.
I think that, or maybe I might kinda make a motion. I would move that we deal with item eight, school committee actions, and then go into executive session to deal with the immediate things that need to be dealt with there and then adjourn for the night and we can handle the rest of it next time.
Okay. We have a motion. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Alivo, so Dr. Page makes the motion to proceed to agenda item number eight and continue with executive session and carry the rest of the stuff over. Is there discussion?
Madam Chair, could I amend that motion to also include agenda item number nine, unfinished business superintendent of schools update?
Okay. Is there a second on the amendment? There's no second.
Okay.
Motion fails. So the main motion again is on proceeding with agenda item number eight, which is school committee actions on executive session. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Abrahamson?
Madam Chair, I, I don't think it would take, as long as some people might indicate to finish this agenda in the order which it's written, it's really not going to take that long.
Okay.
If it does, then I will be duly admonished, but I don't think it will.
Okay.
So I would, I would vote no on the motion.
Thank you. So, here we are, we have a motion and we have a second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, can I have a roll call on the motion, please?
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Alivo?
Yes.
Dr. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Abrahamson?
No.
Mrs. Congdon?
No.
Five yes, two no.
Thank you. The motion carries, so now we're moving on to agenda item number eight, which is school committee actions. A is removal of the supervisor of custodian and maintenance services from the SEIU local 888 collective bargaining agreement.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. Abrahamson, seconded by Mrs. Quinney. Is there any discussion on this agenda item? Okay. You wanna discuss?
Madam Chair, I just, for the public's knowledge, the, currently the supervisor of custodian and maintenance services is within the contract, the SEIU local 888 collective bargaining agreement. However, that position needs to be removed from that in order to be in better alignment with the way that supervisors and people that assign duties is done within the district and statewide. Therefore, that's why we're going through this process to remove the supervisor of custodian and maintenance services.
Thank you. Any further discussion? So the question is on the removal of the supervisor of custodian and maintenance services from the SEIU local 888 collective bargaining agreement. May I have a roll call, please?
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Alivo?
Yes.
Dr. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Abrahamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. The motion carries. Next is on the establishment of a supervisor of maintenance and facilities position.
So moved. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Abrahamson. It's been seconded by Dr. Page. Is there any discussion on the motion? Again, Mrs. Quinney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is, after removing the supervisor of custodian and maintenance services, the title, creating this position of supervisor of maintenance and facilities position will then be out of a collective bargaining agreement and then we'll be able to fulfill the duties that we need. Everyone on the committee has received a job description and so it will be to establish a position outside of the collective bargaining agreement. That is all.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Any further? Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Alivo?
Yes.
Miss, Dr. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Abrahamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. That motion carries. And finally, it says, authors, to authorize the superintendent to negotiate an employment agreement for the supervisor of maintenance and facilities.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Abrahamson makes the motion, Dr. Page seconds the motion. Is there any discussion? Mrs. Quinney?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this will authorize the superintendent to come up with a contract that again will be outside of the collective bargaining agreement with local SEIU local 888. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, may I have a roll call, please?
Dr. Page?
Yes.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Abrahamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Alivo?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to executive session. We would need a vote to, motion to go into executive session pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 31A, Section 21A, Subsection 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the government's bargaining or litigation position and the chair so declares. I so declare, we will be going into executive session to discuss potential litigation and negotiations with the Southbridge Education Association Unit A. And also, it's combined, to enter executive section pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Subsection 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel. These are regarding the acting superintendent contract and the acting finance director contract.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Abrahamson, seconded by Mrs. Congdon. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Quinney?
Yes.
Mr. Abrahamson?
Yes.
Mrs. Congdon?
Yes.
Mrs. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. McLaughlin?
Yes.
Mr. Alivo?
Yes.
Dr. Page?
Yes.
Seven yes.
Thank you. And the school committee will reconvene in open session for the purpose of adjournment only tonight. Thank you and have a good. Committee meeting will be held next Tuesday, February 10th at 7:30 PM. We had made that change because the 10th was a snow date for parent-teacher conferences, so it's 7:30 next Tuesday. And we'll resume the agenda and probably have some new things to discuss.